Okay, alright. Okay, good evening. I'm gonna call to order the meeting of the City of Bloomington Township to order, and if everyone could stand for the pledge of allegiance. Okay, Madam Clerk, if you could please go ahead and call the roll.
Thank you. Trustee Walsh.
Here.
Trustee Bowlin here. Trustee Montney.
Here.
Yeah, Trustee Emig out. Trustee Becker.
Here.
Trustee Urban, we will wait on. Trustee Ward.
Here.
Trustee Crable.
I'm here.
Trustee Crumpler.
Here.
Trustee Milowamway.
Here. For D, right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so, Trustee Urban is out ill today but still able to participate remotely. And so she's requested that we allow her to do that. Can I have a motion to allow her to participate remotely?
I'll make the motion to allow Trustee Urban to join the meeting remotely.
Okay, motion by Trustee Bowlin, second by Trustee.
I'd be happy to second.
Montney, okay. Awesome. Roll though.
Yes, thank you. And just for the record, she is out due to illness.
Yes.
Trustee Walsh.
Yes.
Trustee Bowlin.
Yes.
Trustee Montney.
Yes.
Trustee Becker.
Yes.
Trustee Ward.
Aye.
Trustee Crable.
Yes.
Trustee Crumpler.
Yes.
Trustee Milowamway.
Yes, and Trustee Urban, you are now allowed to participate remotely. Say hello. Can she hear us?
She is online. Trustee Urban, can you hear us? Well, we will work on that.
Thank you.
Okay, there she is.
Okay. Alright, we all good now?
We're all set.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Trustee Crable.
I'll second.
Second by Trustee Bowlin. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Walsh.
Yes.
Trustee Bowlin.
Yes.
Trustee Montney.
Yes.
Trustee Becker.
Yes.
Trustee Urban.
Yes.
Trustee Ward.
Aye.
Trustee Crable.
Yes.
Trustee Crumpler.
Yes.
Trustee Milowamway.
Yes, moving on to the next item. Number five, data sharing agreement and supplemental business associate agreement between the City of Bloomington Township and the Illinois Department of Human Services. And I'm gonna turn it over to Township Supervisor Skilruud for introductory remarks if needed.
This is something I've tried for in the past and, and we were denied. And it's been about four or five years ago and I tried again and we're successful in getting this agreement put in place now. It'll just streamline our business so much better for the client. The client will won't have to get the information from Department of Human Services, which is information that we need to determine eligibility. They don't have to go online for it either. We'll just be able to see the information, take a printout of it, put it in their file, and we've got our proof for them. It's a big help.
Questions?
Thank you, Deb. And I would like to ask, I guess, why did they deny it before? I have a couple. I'll just give them all out. Okay, sorry.
At that time, they weren't giving it out, opening it up to anybody, let alone township at that level, local government. So they were keeping it pretty much at the state. Now, I don't know that 100% certain, but I know other townships that did not have it as well at the time that I was seeking it.
How many people, applicants, do you think dropped out of the process because, because they couldn't receive the documents from the state?
Well, we know that a lot of applicant or people that are going through orientation, getting the packet of information, there's about 80% that do not complete the applications as much as we try. Now, what we do, we have somebody who calls them, continues to let them know what they need. If they're close to getting there, we'll get the appointment. But it's a good 80%, and that could be for a number of reasons. Some could be getting jobs. Some just don't like the process of, you know, having to provide all that information. But we need our information for income assets and, um, income assets and residency. We just have to have proof. So.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Okay, no, if not, then do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the data sharing agreement.
Okay, motion by Trustee Bowlin.
I'll second.
Okay, second by Trustee Becker. Madam Clerk?
All right. Trustee Walsh.
Yes.
Trustee Bowlin.
Yes.
Trustee Montney.
Yes.
Trustee Becker.
Yes.
Trustee Urban.
Yes.
Trustee Ward.
Aye.
Trustee Crable.
Yes.
Trustee Crumpler.
Yes.
Trustee Milowamway.
Yes. Next item on the agenda is a bid approval for request for proposal for Evergreen Memorial Cemetery by, for a new track loader. So, back to you, Township Supervisor Skilruud.
This has been planned with the cemetery. They're in need of this just to be able to stay on track and get the, like, headstones righted properly without having to wait for equipment to come in. I mean, there's a number of things. I don't know all of those things that they're, they're in need of it for. They just have been, they have it in the budget and they plan for this for quite some time. So, they lost one piece of equipment. I'm not very good with my equipment names either. I'm sorry, I don't have the answer to that. They lost one piece of equipment that was doing some of this, and now this isn't one that they've been on and it's new. Can you? I was hoping one of them would be here.
Can you clarify what "lost" means?
Um, just that it was old or it stopped working, you know, so not lost, lost. I don't know any more than that, other than... I don't know anything more than that other than what's in the memo to you.
Just a quick one. Is there the usage profile? Is it the amount of usage enough that they couldn't, for example, use a different piece of equipment that was shared with the city or?
I did approach them on that because I think sharing, even with other townships, is important. I think they looked into other townships and there wasn't the need around there. I do not know if they looked at the City of Bloomington.
As we did just purchase or approve similarly purchased.
A skid steer.
Does anybody else remember, and it's coming to mind, that we just approved a John Deere purchase for the city as well?
I can look it up if you'd like.
In the meantime, other questions?
If, if you'd like, I'll look it up right now. And then if you want to continue to move on the agenda, then we can come back to this one if you'd like.
Okay, sure. Okay, well, why don't we then move on to reports by elected officials, Township Supervisor Skilruud?
Okay, um, I know that there had been discussion about the higher reserve in the general town fund for the past few months. And Trustee Ward mentioned it last month. What can we do with this? I'm not ready to... I don't have all the answers in terms of how much the building repair and maintenance will be. They did not get the numbers to me in time for this board packet. I do anticipate that by next month, I'll be able to prepare an answer for you as to how much reserve I think we could potentially move in a direction of helping the clients. Or, you know, the community, in fact, through grants and aid. So I just don't have that number yet. I wanted to explain again, just so everyone remembers, that the funds are higher due to an influx of availability of federal and state funds during COVID, which meant that township could not participate in, um, in helping the general systems clients, or we couldn't help serve them necessarily at that time. They didn't qualify. And we also had very low workfare expenses because we shut down our workfare programs as well. So for a number of years, our township has been saving for maintenance and repairs on the building. And a good portion of that reserve, um, what's a good portion? I don't know. There's, I mean, there's a portion of that that's going to be used for the building maintenance, which is what it was intended for. We do have the parking lot completed now, but now there is the internal and exterior building issues that are at hand that still need to be worked on. So at the time that I come to the board with this, I will also be coming to the board with an amended budget. And then it's my hope that it's ready next month, but it just depends on how far it's worth, you know, what they provide. And I will communicate that to the board.
Questions? Trustee Crable?
Just so they understand, so we're talking using more general, uh, admin, general administrative funds. Is that right? Or am I?
General town. General town.
That's what I meant. General, general town funds possibly for things that, you know, wouldn't have the restriction of, of the general aid fund.
At this time, I don't have an answer yet. What we talked about is that township can provide grants and aid to other agencies that are serving the needs in a way that we wouldn't be duplicating efforts. We'd be supporting them. And that will probably take some discussions with the board on individual basis or in groups. Maybe a committee being formed to determine how we go about doing that if there is extra funds. And I'll present at the time what our existing grant applications or grants are that we have. You see that in your board packet. They fall under, under certain categories under grants and aid. Not all of that money has been distributed this year, this fiscal year yet.
And, and we set up a separate fund a few years ago, about $200,000 that hasn't been used.
It's been underutilized because people haven't provided the proof that was needed for the COVID.
Right.
We could consider modifying that to some degree, but we are under law with gubernatorial declaration or presidential declaration of, um, of a disaster or a pandemic to be able to do that. I don't have the citing for that in the laws and duties, but I can get that for you.
Okay.
And then we can just see, I, I have been in communication with our attorney to think out of the box. And just not, I don't have any answers at this time.
Thank you.
Trustee Milowamway. So I was able to look up the purchase that Trustee Becker was referencing on September 12th. You approved the purchase of two John Deere tractors, a four series and a five series. One had like a snow blower attachment and the other one a mowing attachment. It was to the tune of $199,000 with a trade-in that brought it down for, I think, $179. So that's what I can get from the, the memo, whether you want to take that into consideration. There was also in June, uh, consideration that you approved for a separate purchase of John Deere tractors as well.
So I guess that takes it to my question is, should we at least ask if there's a way to utilize the equipment before we spend the money?
For the City of Bloomington? They're not gonna be able to use John Deere tractors. That's not gonna cut it. But this is more heavy duty for burial, tombstones that get knocked over, things like that. But it's your, your call. This has been planned in the budget for them to get this piece of equipment, just saying.
Trustee Bowlin?
No, I appreciate it, um, ultimate, or Trustee Becker's concern about duplication, but what I'm hearing is that this is actually a specialized piece of equipment.
It's a skid steer. It's not specialized specifically for, it, it's what they need for the job. For the cemetery work, but.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so what would you like to do? Is there a motion, one or another, or a question?
Just a quick look. It appears they're completely different types of equipment, so I'd be comfortable approving this. I'd be happy to make the motion to approve it as presented.
Okay, I will second that.
Okay, motion by Trustee Montney, second by Trustee Bowlin. Madam Clerk?
Trustee Walsh.
Yes.
Trustee Bowlin.
Yes.
Trustee Montney.
Yes.
Trustee Becker.
Yes.
Trustee Urban.
Yes.
Trustee Ward.
Aye.
Trustee Crable.
Yes.
Trustee Crumpler.
Yes.
Trustee Milowamway.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so back to reports by elected officials, and we're going to go with, uh, trust, um, Township Assessor, Scotter.
Good evening. Uh, not much to report on this month, except for the assessments have been turned into the county. We made adjustments to over 20,000 assessments in the City of Bloomington, so there's gonna be a slight change in the EAV. Most of the assessments increased. We didn't see many areas with decreases. Attaches the school district report, which shows the EAV for the, how it's broken up into the school districts within the city. And the exemptions aren't current, and there could be differences in the assessment amounts to at this time, as we're changing things around, as we run the reports, there's gonna be difference in the numbers. We're waiting on the county to see if the city will get a multiplier because of the adjustments that we made. Uh, we haven't had a multiplier from the county in quite a few years, so it'll be determined on what they see on our numbers when we get that. So I'll report on that when it happens. Any questions?
Questions for Assessors Scotter? Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments?
We received no public comment for anyone registered or emailed.
Okay, thank you. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion by Trustee Bowlin, second by, let's pick a day, my dear. Trustee Becker. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Some are yawning. This is gonna be an exciting meeting. I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the meeting of the City of Bloomington Council. And if everyone could stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And into the republic which stands one nation under God.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, could you please call the rule?
Councilmember Walsh.
Here.
Councilmember Bowlin.
Here.
Councilmember Motney.
Here.
We have Councilmember Emig out, Councilmember Becker.
Here.
And Councilmember Ward.
I'm here.
Councilmember Crable.
Here.
Councilmember Crumpler.
Here.
Mayor Milawonway.
Here.
Councilmember Urban is out sick tonight, and she has requested to attend remotely due to illness, which is allowable by code. And can I have a motion to allow Councilmember Urban to participate remotely?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Councilmember.
I will second.
Crable, and then the second by Councilmember Bowlin. Madam Clerk, could you please call the rule?
Councilmember Walsh.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowlin.
Yes.
Councilmember Motney.
Yes.
Councilmember Becker.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
I.
Councilmember Crable.
Yes.
Councilmember Crumpler.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Urban, are you there?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, thank you. At this point, do we have any public comment, Madam Clerk?
We actually did not have anybody register for public comment this evening, but we did receive one email earlier today that was shared by council. Actually, I think it came in the form of two, but from the same person, and that was from Dave Cobus.
Okay, thank you. I would read my statement just for fun, but I guess we can pass on that. I know how much everybody looks forward to that. So the next item is recognition and appointments and recognition of boards and commissions appointment as requested by the Administration Department. And there's no motion. This is just recognition only, correct?
All right, and so we're just congratulating Carla Poll for the appointment to the John M. Scott Healthcare Commission. Carla is not with us this evening, but congratulations. Thanks for your service.
All right, well, thank you, Carla. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. And is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, motion second.
I would like to pull seven L, please.
Seven L, okay. Oh, okay, all right. So do you want to make an amended motion then? A different motion?
I amend the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented with the exception of.
Seven L?
Seven L.
Okay, and is there a second?
It's our second, as amended.
Okay, second by Councilmember Crumpler. Get confused with the trustees. We were talking about trustees earlier. Okay. Oh, we do have a link, right? Okay. And we do need, is Councilmember Urban on the link as well?
Yes, and she's able to vote remotely.
Okay, the item passes. There are no needs to announce. And then we are moving to item seven L, Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you, and I apologize. I meant to send an email with a question on this earlier today, and the day ran away from me. I just want to, and I don't see anything in here except that they had checked the box in the application regarding gaming machines. Is there anything in this license for this, this request that would allow gaming machines in this location?
At this point, I don't think so.
So we, we do have a video gaming waitlist. In the sense of the list, it's a wait. There's not one that's available. I didn't sit for the liquor commission, so the mayor might be able to speak to that a little bit more. But in order to receive gaming, they would have to submit an application and be waitlisted, at which point a license would have to come available.
Okay, thank you.
All right, with that said, is there a motion to approve?
I motion to approve.
Okay.
I will second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Walsh, and second by Councilmember Bowlin. And do you have a link for that, or? Okay, the item passes. There are no needs to announce. Okay, the next item on the agenda is item eight A, a presentation on recommended city programs to distribute American Rescue Plan Act funding within approved city council categories of spending and ARPA allowances as requested by the Economic and Community Development Department and the Administration Department. And I'm gonna turn it over to City Manager Gleason for introductory remarks.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As the community may recall, council approved buckets, is how I described it, for how the city would apply and use under the federal guidelines, Treasury guidelines, of course, but how we would use the ARPA funds. There were two buckets, $2.2 million each for socioeconomic and for economic development. Staff was directed to come up with sort of a template, a guideline, something that anybody that might be interested in applying for these funds, the pathway to be approved or denied. This has actually taken a fair amount of staff effort. And tonight is a presentation that's gonna be led by Melissa Han, our Director of Economic Community Development, and then also Deputy City Manager Billy Tyas. It's about 11 or 12 slides, and then this is gonna be two-part. We found that some of this aligns with existing programs and does not need council approval. But we do have portions of this that council will have to act on this, and our plan is to bring that back in front of council, the first council meeting in October. So I'm gonna turn it over to the Deputy City Manager first. Thanks.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. Really quickly, and more so for, for public information, the city is receiving or has received a rounded number of $13.4 million in funding as part of the American Rescue Plan Act. Phil, if you'll move to the first slide, please. Slide, please. As the manager mentioned, back in July, I believe, council approved three categories of ARPA funding, giving staff direction as to where to focus our efforts on how to spend those funds, and also the best serve identified community needs. As the manager mentioned, those categories also have to fit within Treasury-defined categories as well. So anything that we would do or propose would also have to fit within those proposed categories as well. And so as you can see on the screen, the three cat, the three buckets, as you approved back in July, are for infrastructure, economic development, and socioeconomic opportunities, and you can see the totals on the screen as well. Over time, there have been commitments made from each of those buckets. And so, Phil, if you'll go to the next slide, please. Of the allocated amounts, those are the amounts that remain in each category. There have been items, as I said, that have come before you for consideration and approval to fund much-needed projects. As an example, in the infrastructure category, we approved Locust Colton Design and work on the hydraulic modeling for the East Street Basin. The Locust Colton Design was $750,000, and hydraulic modeling was roughly $1.1 million. Under the economic development category, there was a commitment for the $750,000 for the streetscape work approved here recently. And then, under the socioeconomic categories, there was an expenditure or commitment for $150,000, for the Carl Mobile Health Unit. Again, all items that came before you and all that fit within these categories. And so those are the amounts that are remaining in each category. Next slide, please, Phil. As staff began working on possible programs, you had your retreat here recently, and our thought was to pause and to look at, are there ways that the programs we bring before you can incorporate some of the things that you have said were important to you as part of that retreat? Now, to be clear, that report is not final yet. We know that. But there were several themes that came as part of your work that we've considered as part of the programs that we will bring before you today. Again, there were several priorities, but three of them generally were, were those on the screen. And you can see some of the, some of the areas underneath those themes that you wanted to impact. For example, as you can see, you want, you want to revitalize older communities, specifically among others, the downtown, the West End, and the Warehouse District and Market Street, among others. Under economic development, you can see the list of, of potential items that you want to impact or that you want to do. But specific to some of what you'll hear tonight, we believe that we're able to impact the bolded areas. When you talk about business expansion and retention or ADA compliance and making buildings more ADA compliant, you talk about workforce development. We've, there's been a lot of conversations, and rightfully so, about homelessness. Some of the things that we're talking about tonight, we feel like can, if approved, can help to impact those areas as well. And then, obviously, housing has been a topic of discussion throughout the community, but also with you amongst your priorities. And so we wanted to see if there was a way to, throughout, through this funding, to impact housing as well. And so, again, as I said earlier, the feds have pages upon pages of rules, and everything that we're proposing tonight, we, we've looked at those rules, and they fit within the rules as, as the feds have said they have to. And so we're confident that the things that we're proposing tonight are eligible. Obviously, there are rules that we have to follow as part of implementing, and we understand that. And Councilmember Bowlin is smiling at me, and I get it. But we, we've taken a look, and we're confident that they fit within the rules as, as proposed. And so with that, I will turn things over to Melissa Han, our Director of Economic and Community Development. She can start to walk through some of the things that are being proposed in terms of programs for the expenditures. Melissa?
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager, and thank you to Deputy City Manager Tyas. As he mentioned, you know, looking at the programs and guidance from the Treasury, next slide, please. We were looking at how can we, you know, best impact our business community, that retention and expansion piece, especially for small businesses. That's one thing that has been highlighted, you know, throughout the guidance. So looking at doing some rehabilitation grants up to a predetermined amount for small businesses, and they would have to meet the definition of a small business per Section Three of the Small Business Act, once again, coming out of that Treasury guidance. We would be looking at doing some qualifying projects to buildings such as storefront accessibility, facade improvements, building code compliance. You know, with some of our updates that we did with the building code, there were, you know, some impacted for, for fire safety and suppression. So that would fall within that signage, awning, really looking at how can we have a, you know, sustained impact and allowing those businesses to make those upgrades to their buildings, we felt would be a great way to do that, and allowing them, you know, the opportunity to use those funds that, that maybe they were thinking they were gonna have to use for those type of expenditures and keep that within their, their operating. Next slide, please. And so we'd be looking at, as I said, small business grants for those disproportionately impacted. Once again, that is outlined in the guidance, and they have to fall within a qualified census tract. Those are defined by HUD. So these would be the qualified census tracts for Bloomington. As you can see, some of it is up there in, in normal. But for the qualified census tracts, they have to, it's 50% with income below 60% of area meeting income. And so that would be areas covered downtown warehouse districts and part of the west side that would qualify for those rehabilitation grants. Next slide, please. For the socioeconomic assistance, we are looking at doing grants to nonprofit, local nonprofit organizations, grants of up to $150,000 serving Bloomington residents. And those nonprofits would be those serving households with annual incomes at or below the 300% of the federal poverty guideline. And once again, that's coming from the Treasury guidance. And these would be for needs that have been identified within the consolidated plan and community health survey. And we'll get into those services in just a minute. Next slide, please. The income limits for those residents served for the 300% below the national, federal poverty level. Here's just a snippet, family size of one to four, where those incomes would fall in order to qualify for the programs or those being served by the nonprofits. Next slide, please. So some of the assistance, types of assistance, as outlined in the consolidated plan as well as the community health survey, would be any homeless services, workforce development, job training, senior youth and childcare services, disability services, food services, active living services, health services focused on disparities and mental health. We would offer an application process very similar to what we do currently for the John M. Scott Commission and CDVG Public Service Programs. So we would just open up that type of application, allowing for those local nonprofits to apply online through that process. And with that, I will turn it back over to Billy.
Thank you. Phil, next slide, please. And so a third program that we've talked about under the socioeconomic category was affordable housing preservation and development. Specifically, the thought being that we would provide a grant program for homes located on the west end of, of our community, where we would provide grants through a lottery system, and that, that preliminarily, that's the way we figured we would handle it. For homes on the west end, we would define specifically what west end meant. We know that we'd have to establish boundaries. Where we would, we would fund certain things to improve the housing stock in, in that part of our community, where perhaps we do grants of between $20,000 and $40,000, as an example, to fund certain services. This is a need that has been outlined in the consolidated plan. Investing in housing and investing in the west end of our community has also been listed as a priority for you as a council as well. Next slide, please, Phil. So the thought being possible eligible items could include improvements to homes for accessibility, improving accessibility in and out of homes. You know, there are a lot of homes that are older in that part of our community that need, perhaps need a roof or porches or stairs and steps repaired, and you can read the rest of them. People don't think about things like exterior improvements for like, painting a house makes it look better. There are people who perhaps can't afford that, that type of work. And so perhaps we, we, we fund painting or trim or fascia work or those kinds of things. This isn't an all exhaustive list, but it's a list of things that we could perhaps fund through this grant program. Again, limited in terms of the amount we would provide, in terms of the dollar amount of a grant. And our thought was, in fairness, we would do it through a lottery system. We're not married to that, but the thought was do a lottery, because there are some people, you could do it first come, first served, but there are some people who can't get here to apply or who can't, who, so the lottery, we felt like, might be fairer in terms of how we might expend those funds if this is approved. And so, again, as the manager said earlier, if this is the direction that you're, you're, you are willing to go, then we would come back before you with approval of some of the programs at a later date here soon for your consideration and approval. So with that, Phil, are there any more slides? Nope, nice. Couldn't remember. With that, we'll take any questions. But, but before we do that, Melissa, can you, Phil, can you go back to the income slide for the person served? I wanna make note of this slide, because I think that the dollar amounts in terms of the maximum incomes are perhaps higher than what people might have thought that there would be. So I think that because of, it's, it's up to 300% of the poverty line, we're gonna be able to serve more people than people might perhaps think that we were. And to the slide where Melissa talked about serving businesses in the qualified census tracts, her department selected that because it was going to be less burdensome on businesses to, to apply if we selected businesses in that area. Versus just generally opening things up, there would be more requirements for people to apply, and it would be harder. One of the things that we've made a priority is to try and make this as easy as possible, as we can, but also making sure that we follow the rules. With that, we'll take any questions.
Sure, Mayor. And the funds have to be obligated by 2024, right?
Obligated by '23, spent by '24, I believe. Did I say that wrong? 24, 26. Thank you. I know you do.
Okay, just wanted to be sure. Are, are there questions, Councilmember Crable?
Yes, I have a number of questions. Thank you for the preparation of this and guidelines. I think this is what we needed. I do have some concerns as it's been presented. And just, just to what was last said, so we've kind of obligated it already to these three buckets, right? So, so I'm wanting to understand, like, somebody could apply after. Um, so, so I'm wanting to understand, like, somebody could apply after twenty twenty-four as long as the money is used by the end of twenty twenty-six. That's still within the guidelines?
Yeah, go ahead.
Or do we have to?
I think, I mean, we would set it up and open the applications. Um, but I would think that, I know it, it sounds like a lot of money, but when you start looking at really about how many grants we could do, I, I think it will probably be spent fairly quickly. Um, you know, when I, I think we would revisit it if a time came that we had been open for quite a while and if the monies just weren't being expended, I think we would then revisit, you know, if, if there was a council desire to do something different at that point.
So the goal is to spend by twenty twenty-four, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, who is going to make the decisions on these? Will it be staff or council?
Your mic's not on.
Sorry. Uh, for the individual um, programs for the small business, we would do first come, first serve. Um, you know, staff would verify that they have met all of the qualifications as outlined uh, per the Treasury guidance. As I mentioned, they would have to meet the qualifications as being a small business. Um, they would have to be in the qualified census tract and uh, verify what those um, improvements would be. I think same for the nonprofit, we would do it very similar, as I said, to what we do for CDBG and John M. Scott. We have a rubric that staff uses. There's a subcommittee that scores each of the applications. And so um, we would continue that same process as we do with our public service type grants as well.
And then um, so that there's a hundred and fifty thousand dollar limit proposed for socioeconomic projects. So if, if uh, nonprofits had projects bigger than that, then that would uh, prevent that from happening, right? It would, if it's higher than that amount, potentially.
Yes, we would set that as the cap, as I said, especially with doing the um, housing piece as well. Um, when we start to really kind of distribute that, i- it's gonna really kind of limit about how many we're able to do. So we felt like setting that cap, we were still able to give a substantial amount and kind of spread it evenly throughout the nonprofits in the community as well.
The other thing we would say to that is that I, I don't want there to, I, I don't, I don't think there should be an assumption that the city funding is the only funding for some of the projects being proposed. I, I think that in, in a lot of cases, we want to make sure that they're sustainable and that there's funding from other sources as well, in addition to any city funding that was provided.
Okay. Um, yeah, I, I just think also to the, if, if there's higher limits, then bigger projects can have better, bigger impacts. Uh, a- and then some of the restrictions, um, I think you based it on the consolidated plan. Although I don't know if that's a little bit more restrictive than the, than the ARP guidelines. Um, and just, just concerned that we, we could potentially leave out some needs in the community just because they don't strictly um, you know, meet those categories. And I, I heard, I, I wasn't sure if I heard these were exclusive or non-exclusive list.
Help me, help, I want to make sure we understand the question. So are you talking about the not-for-profit funding or, or are you talking about the housing?
It's the socioeconomic, it, it lists about uh, seven different categories out of the consolidated fund. And just wanting to see if that is like, that's it, or is that just uh, an example of a list of, of things that could be used? What were you thinking on that?
So I think that, you know, there could be other potential, um, you know, things that were identified. We were using what has been identified in the community's needs through the consolidated plan and the health survey. Obviously, the Treasuries tried to provide a, a, a pretty exhaustive list. Um, but I can say a lot of those, you'll kind of see repeated, even if it's the, the health and the negative, the response to the negative impacts, whether it's health associated, which would kind of fall within that mental health. If you move over to more of the economic is where it's kind of getting into, you know, homeless services, childcare services, workforce services. So there is definitely a lot of overlap there from what we've identified here within the community that is a need to be funded as well as, is what's been provided in the, in the Treasury list.
Thanks. And I'll just leave it with the statement. Um, you know, to me, the ARP money was to be used for special things that we wouldn't necessarily uh, spend on. So I don't want us to be using the money on things that maybe we should be funding from our uh, general budget or, or other grants that are available. I'm thinking lead remediation, just an example you gave. I know we've got a grant program for that. So that's, I'll end with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Crumpler and then Ward.
Uh, excuse me. Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you, Melissa, you know, for, for this presentation and Billy for, for helping us understand. Uh, just as a follow-up, you know, to Councilmember Crable, um, you know, I, I understand the, the desire um, to distribute resources broadly across the community. I'm, I'm talking about uh, su- support for um, nonprofits, the socioeconomic category. I guess, you know, a hundred fifty thousand dollars, um, just doesn't seem like, doesn't seem like a lot of money to me sometimes. Um, and I wonder um, if, if there were um, a larger project that could demonstrate a substantive community impact, how hard and fast is that, is that cap? Is that something that we could consider as a council or, or is that pretty much spin aside?
We could for sure. Um, to be, I also want to, I think it's worth noting that um, we want to make sure that we're able to distribute these funds across a number of different organizations because there are a number of different needs in our community.
Of course.
So, but you could, we could, you could. Um, the other thing, as I said earlier, is, is we want to make sure that these programs, especially those that perhaps serve a regional need, aren't simply reliant on the cities, funding that came to the city as their only funding source. There are a number of other funding sources out there
Sure.
that we would hope that they would be applying to and reaching out for. They're both in fairness to everyone, but also, you know, there, it's, if it's a regional need, then it could be funded through regional sources.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next I have Councilmember Ward and then Walsh.
Yeah, thank you for this. It's really helpful to see this um, coming to fruition and I'm, I'm excited about it. Um, just for a point of clarification, I think um, Mr. Tyus, you mentioned that there might be some of these funds that don't need council member approval in order to be spent. Could you clarify that and, and explain which ones and why?
Well, well, w- we're still working through some of that, but we believe that the programs would have, will have to come back to you for, for approval. Like, if you say yes to the three programs, we will come back to you with more specificity in terms of what they are and what the, the, the program limits are, the dollar amounts, et cetera, et cetera, for you to consider and approve. We, we would do that. The, some of the approvals of like the actual grants don't necessarily come back before you or some of the, you know, we, there would be a process, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, where we would score and make recommendations for what gets funded.
Gotcha. Kind of like, I'm, I'm just thinking of like the rest grants or the funk grants, right?
Yes.
A previous council approved setting those things up, but it's not like each individual item comes to us. Is that? Okay, cool.
Correct.
Um, then one other question, um, well, actually two questions. On the affordable housing preservation and development proposal, um, you mentioned a lottery. Can you explain a little bit more about what you're envisioning there?
Well, typically what we've seen um, is that we will open up the lottery process and we will say we have funds available to fund housing improvements for a defined area. We would say you can come in and apply either online with a very simple application for those who are internet savvy. Or you can come in between these hours and give us your preliminary application, which will list your, your information like name, address, perhaps income, et cetera, et cetera. We would take those and do a preliminary review and then draw, literally draw where, you know, there, there's, it's not, you're not, it's, you're not standing in a line. It, it's literally a lottery where you draw the names of people for potential funding. And it's an attempt to be fairer to people who, A, maybe they're working during the day and they can't be here at eight o'clock to stand in line. Or maybe they're not internet savvy and they can't start logging in and putting their name in it, it, as soon as things open. That's the intent of it. And literally the names of addresses are drawn and then we review um, their applications.
Okay. And then one other question on that same proposal. Are you envisioning that this would go only to single-family homeowner residences? Or are you also thinking about this in terms of, of grants to um, to rental owners?
Our original thought was single-family homeownership. We've had a lot of conversations about rentals. Um, and we're still considering that, still having that conversation, but our, our thought as of right now was, was uh, single-family homeownership. But we're still having the conversation. I, I will say that.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, Councilmember Walsh and then Bowlin and Montney.
Thank you. And thank you for putting this together. Uh, and I just have a, a couple of questions and comments on this. Uh, with this proposal and, and what you're throwing, tossing out here for us, is there going to be a documented piece of paper, something that somebody can download or come into the, to the city offices and pick up, you know, for these small businesses? So I'll, I'll focus on them first and say, these are the guidelines. This is what you must meet in order to get this.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Um, next I want to go to the, the possible eligible items. And I know we, we, we've talked about, you know, that there's some things that, you know, we already have grants out there for, but the lead remediation was something that, that really touched me there that, yes, we have grants for lead remediation, but if we could take an opportunity to accelerate lead remediation because we have extra funds, um, e- especially when we get into early childhood development and things like that. I think that's something that if we have an opportunity to, to accelerate lead remediation, I think that's something that we should definitely take advantage of. Um, and then I guess a couple of other possible eligible items that I would like to see i- if they are eligible, radon remediation. And I know there's programs out there already from us and lots of other agencies on energy efficiency. I think energy efficiency is something that, you know, as, as we roll more and more forward here, I think it's, we're, we, we all know the importance of energy efficiency, that if we could get into, you know, just unrolling some pig rolls in somebody's attic, um, something like that, you know? It really is not going to be that much money for each individual household, but it would help tremendously all the way around. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you. Um, Melissa, that's great what you did here. Um, but I do have, I just want, I'm going to make some comments and don't be offended. The, the ARP funds are of course eligibility is based on the final rule. We talked about that. It is relatively broad. How, and it's, these funds are to be used for disproportionately affected by COVID. You mentioned that. But they need to be COVID-related. These funds, in my opinion, are um, for the lingering effects, lingering economic effects to businesses. They're not necess- and, and it specifically says in the final rule that loss or costs which were incurred on or after March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. So if we're bringing up things like lead remediation and radon remediation and all that, that is not COVID-related and it was present prior to these dates. So I would have trouble going down that path. And let's see, I would like to talk a little bit about landlords as small business. Would that fall into that category of small business based on the law that you quoted?
As Billy mentioned, landlords is still something that we're, we're looking into. That affordable housing uh, preservation and development is allowable under the Treasury guidance. So it, it's something that we're still investigating um, to see if, if there's an ability to do that. I think for the, the radon and lead remediation, I guess, just to make sure that I'm clear, because I was understanding, Councilmember Walsh, you were saying that in regards to the single-family homeowner, correct? Not, okay. So I think for those, those would all be kind of those qualifying factors to um, you know, keep somebody in their home to reduce homelessness, to reduce, you know, those uh, impacts that can occur if, uh, whether it be somebody becoming disabled and, and needing to make those accessibility changes or um, just kind of the aging in place, you know, making sure that as our population ages, we're helping them um, making those changes. So I think any of those, those types of things, whether it's, you know, more energy efficient hot water heater or air conditioning unit or furnace or radon remediation, anything that's going to help to keep the person in their home. Um, you know, will, will reduce that impact on homelessness and um, you know, keep people in their homes. So I think any of those things um, we can do as well.
Okay, before we move, sorry, before we move any further, we need to extend time.
I'll move that.
Okay, is there a second?
Fifteen minutes.
Fifteen. Okay, sounds good. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Councilmember Crable.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Walsh? Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Montney?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Councilmember Urban?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Hi.
Councilmember Crable? Councilmember Crepler?
And Councilmember, oh, sorry, Councilmember Urban, let's make sure that we don't forget about you. So feel free to, at some point when there's a pause, maybe if you have something to say, please let us know. Okay.
Thank you. Um, I hear what you're saying. I don't necessarily agree. And a lot of the things that you were talking about um, with single-family homes are, are pretty much addressed by the CBGD grant. I personally would like to see ARP money or at least a significant amount um, go for rentals. Rehabbing rentals and uh, specifically, the state just passed a law um, HB twenty-six twenty-one, which would, it's, well, it's tax, it has to do with property tax abatement. Um, but it does not necessarily affect the tax base within the city. And that law could actually um, leverage against the ARP funds to benefit rental rehab. Um, there's definitely a shortage of that, you know, Patrick Holvin, you know, just talking about rental units and, you know, affordable units. And there were several uh, landlords that came here. They can't rent their apartment because of the lean, because of the water and all that. I would like to see some relief for landlords in that sense. But if they don't qua- qualify as small business, then that might, you know, be an issue. I don't, with the CBGD and the ARP funds, I don't want to see overlap and duplication. I'd like to be able to share the wealth, so to speak. Um, and what else? Oh, there was one thing that I saw when I was looking at the CBGD grant um, application. If these nonprofits are already receiving federal funding, would they disqualify from ARP funds? Because that's federal funding too.
Were you saying just in general of asking them if they were receiving federal funding or?
Well, yeah. I mean, would they qualify for, you know, this ARP money from the city if they are already receiving federal funding? I mean, yeah, that could be a question for qualification for the receipt of the money. Is that possible?
So are you saying if they are receiving any other form of federal funding, that they should not be eligible for the ARP funding? Or you're just asking if it would conflict with other federal funding they're receiving?
Kind of both. I mean, I would like to maybe have the council decide or you could look into it more clearly to see if yeah.
Yeah.
I get kind of paranoid when you're dealing with federal funding because I don't want to have to return it and be penalized for, you know, using, using it with, with Because I don't want to have to return it and be penalized for, you know, using, using it with, with not within the parameters.
Yes, neither do I. So you can, you can ask my coworkers. But that's how much fun it is, um, dealing with me on that. But no, I, I agree with you and, and it really kind of varies based on the funding. So some federal funds, you can use other federal funds as your match. Like if you have a match that you are required to provide. So for some organizations, this may help build capacity because they may be able to use the funds as match. Um, so it, it really would depend organization to organization, depending on what funding.
So that could address, um, Alderman Crable's concern with the cap? That if they, you know, matching funds, you know, we give them 150 and then. That would like match the federal funding from maybe another grant?
Potentially.
Yeah, okay.
Kind of varies.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Montney.
I'd just like to build on a few of the points that Donna just made. Um, we have had a number of public commenters and also written public comments around the impact to our. Available rental housing stock here by virtue of the council's decision. A couple of years ago for water bills. Um, it's my understanding that, um, from these commenters. That the water bills that were unpaid by the tenants of these properties are now falling to those landlords. And as a result, and in light of the fact that this package is a COVID-19 relief package. By its own naming convention with the federal government. This is a direct impact from the COVID-19 pandemic and the subsequent policymaking here by this council. So I just wanted to bring this up as something that I think needs to be explored. I realize that we've made some concessions with some of these landlords. That perhaps allows them extended payment dates and things of that nature. But I think we do need to know how many rental properties in Bloomington. Resulted in unpaid water bills that were passed through to the landlord. What the total amount of those unpaid water bills are that have become their responsibility? How much has already been paid? The current amount outstanding? And how many properties resulted in water shut off? That could be reopened if the landlord had the wherewithal to make those payments? For water that they didn't use. So I do want to bring that up. I'm not sure which of your categories it fits in. Uh, but I do think it's a direct hit on the spirit of what the, um, ARPA relief funding was provided for.
Okay, thank you. All right, Councilmember Ward and Crable?
Yeah, um, I just need some clarity because I know this keeps getting raised over and over again. That these funds shouldn't be spent on certain things because they're supposed to be COVID relief funds. So let me just say this and tell me, correct me if I'm wrong in saying this. Is the argument about the funds needing to be spent on COVID related issues? That the pandemic inordinately affected those from lower socioeconomic levels? And therefore addressing those issues is COVID related by definition?
Mayor, I'll try and address that. So the, the act actually allows for several different, you know, we keep using the term buckets. Let's not use our buckets that we've talked about, but the ARPA buckets. And so the treasury guidelines tell us that we can spend. Our money or any, any ARPA funds, any community can do it the same way. On several different items. One of those items is classified as, for example, lost revenue. And they have specifically said, you know, we're just going to assume and give you a $10 million pass. That we'll assume you've got 10 million in lost revenue. And you can spend that on any government service that you provide. There are some limitations on that, but you can provide that. And one of the examples they give is infrastructure, right? So infrastructure probably has very little relationship to COVID. But that's an allowable expense under the treasury guidelines. Another bucket does have what Melissa is talking about. In terms of those impacted socio, socioeconomic, those types of impacts. Where you, you have to show more of that relationship as to the impact of COVID. And so there are just different categories. So one of the things we're talking about is at a high level. The council has said, we'd like to see these funds spent in these ways. What we will have to do with staff is, once you guys, once final decisions are made. Go back and make sure those, we'll check the box of the appropriate treasury guidelines. And so some of them are related, you know, directly to COVID. Some of them are, there's a little bit more flexibility, quite frankly. But does that help answer your question?
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Crable?
Thank you. Um, yeah, and, and I know some people have talked after me, have made some specific, like given specific examples. And I'll give a specific example of, we've been presented with. Um, a need for a community navigator to match, uh, you know, tenants with, with landlords. So it's something that'll benefit both landlords and tenants and. But it could be argued, well, it doesn't necessarily, maybe it's homelessness, right? But doesn't necessarily fit within any of these, you know, buckets that have been outlined by you and your staff. What, what would you say to that?
For that specific example, I would say if it was a nonprofit, I would think that it would fall to preventing homelessness.
Okay.
So I mean, to me, I would think that that would fall within that, that category for that specific example.
Okay, and then I'll say, um, I, I do think, you know, if we're going to consider like, uh, water bills or water amounts owed by landlords. You know, the other option is what we, I think, have been doing. Uh, what Alderman Montney said is, you know, reducing those bills, right? Um, whatever you call that, um, it should know. But, uh, you know, reducing what's owed. Um, and, and doing that, uh, rather than necessarily taking, you know, art money. But, but I, I do see the issues with that and how they were directly impacted.
Okay, Councilmember Walsh?
No, yeah, thank you. And I just want to, uh, want to comment on, you know, what's, what's available? And what's, what constitutes, uh, qualification under the ARP funds? And looking specifically at like the grants for, for single family homes and things like that. Well, those grants for single family homes could be worded as such that. That money is going to those, those, those homes. But then that money is then being paid to small business owners who would have been impacted by COVID. And that, that's an assistance to those small business owners. Uh, by way of going through homeownership and helping homeowners. At the same time that we're helping local small businesses. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bowlin?
Yeah, I just want to say one last thing. And again, it has to do with appreciation for the work that you've done. We as a council have pretty much decided, decided the buckets. And we decide the what? And then you figure out how? And I think that you've really done a good job of figuring out how. I know there's some tweaks that might need to be done. But I think that this is going to make it easier for everybody to manage the funds and disperse them. So thank you.
Well, thank you, and that is a good way to end that conversation, kept Melissa off the hook. Uh, but I, I would add, um, that I just want to thank staff for. Really taking the opportunity, taking what we discussed during the retreat. And moving ahead with that, you know? I guess the technical term is getting a jump on it, right? So, um, thank you, thank you very much. That, I think it's, it's fantastic. So we're going to move on to item 8B. Consideration and action on, in ordinance approving the Fifth Amendment to the contract. Between the City of Bloomington and team Tim Gleason. Uh, as requested by the city council. Um, and before. I give council a chance to make some, some comments, I wanted to share some comments of my own. Um, Mr. Gleason was hired by the City of Bloomington in July 2018. Time flies when you're having fun. Um, are you having fun? Okay, good. Uh, I am the only elected official, uh, who was involved in his hiring at the time. And I, I believe then, and I still believe now, that it was probably one of the most impactful decisions that I made. Uh, as a, as an elected official. And I know he's had to work with many different elected officials. But I have noted that an overall consistent theme, uh, every year. And this year is no different. Uh, Mr. Gleason's performance has been, uh, no different as the council as a whole. Determined that his performance exceeded expectations. Particularly as we continue to deal with the ups and downs, uh, of COVID. Among the highlights of his performance, uh, the council noted, uh. Excellent financial management of the city. We, we've had some, uh, significant, uh, development agreements, uh, in some areas that had been. I would say a sore spot for the city for a long time, such as C2 East. We, we've had, uh, development, uh, you know, agreements with, uh, Red Raccoon, uh, expansion there. Quick Trip, Egg Republic. Uh, we've also had the management of the June flooding, uh, which, um. Again, I, I think we all appreciated the approach of, um. Having an issue and then what do we do, you know, coming up with some, uh, creative solutions, uh, to try to address the issue? So this has resulted, as you've heard earlier, in the acceleration of the Locust Colton project. Hydraulic modeling, uh, E Street Basin to help us deal with flooding. We've had a continued, uh, focus on street resurfacing. Um, and you're going to see more of that, um, in, in future years as the council is also committed to that. We've had infrastructure, uh, we have projects, uh, such as. Unia Pool, uh, the library, uh, downtown streetscape. Uh, these are projects that have languished, uh, for a while. Uh, and many of us doubted that we would be able to, uh, accomplish those before the city manager came on board. And here we are, so we've accomplished those. Or are on the way to accomplishing them. And another thing that, you know, has been noted that Mr. Gleason is, uh, widely respected, uh, throughout the community. And he's, uh, very present at, uh, community events. So, uh, I know that the, the city manager position is one that is very challenging. And identifying individuals who excel at it is a very difficult task. In the world of executive leadership. Individuals with such a record of accomplishments are routinely contacted by search firms. On behalf of other organizations. And I think for that reason, the council as a whole. Uh, agreed that a 3.5% was fair and served as recognition. Of a job well done under very challenging circumstances. But also an expression of our desire to retain him as our city manager. More importantly, um, I believe retaining Mr. Gleason gives us an opportunity to build momentum. Towards a strategic vision, we as a council agreed on, uh, during our retreat a couple of weeks ago. Many things came out of that retreat. And as you saw, we are getting a jump on it already, which is fantastic. Uh, and beyond a familiar. Topic such as infrastructure revitalization, economic development. That believed is a true desire by both this council and city manager Gleason. To continue to work on those areas of city services that need improvement. But also cement Bloomington's position as one of the leading destinations and places to live in the Midwest. So with that, I, I'm going to also give council a, an opportunity to, uh, share some thoughts. If you would like, or we can start with a motion.
I'll start with the motion to approve 8B, uh, as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Crable, second by Councilmember Ward. Discussion. Councilmember Crable?
I mean, it's hard to say anything more than what you did, mayor. A hundred percent agree with everything and I, I don't know if you mentioned, I think you mentioned this. But, you know, uh, Tim had to, and the whole city had to deal with COVID, right? And, you know, I questioned how much we could do and how much maybe we should hunker down, right? Uh, but Tim was very, um, you know, just set the, you know, set us on the, on the right course. To continue, uh, to, you know, improve the city. Uh, provide benefits to people in the community through use of the arena. For, uh, you know, vaccination shots, those types of things. And he did a lot of thinking outside the box, so.
Thank you, other comments? Okay, I think we're ready.
If I could get Councilmember Bowlin and Councilmember Urban to refresh, please? Oh, we got it. Thank you.
Okay. All right, yeah, item passes are known as to announce. Congratulations, we should clap for him, right? No, maybe not. Job well done. Okay, yes, next item on the agenda is our beloved finance director. I'm going to start breaking out like friends dearly beloved. We've gathered here to celebrate this thing called finance.
Take it away, okay. Okay, um, tonight's, uh, report, it's, it's going to be a little bit of a rinse repeat from, uh, last month. We're, we're in kind of strange times now with the economy, et cetera. We're four months in, so that's a third of the way through the year. Yet with some of the revenue categories, we only have two months. Uh, so I'm, I'm going to come to, comment just a little bit more on process and how we're handling this. Versus really in, in digging into the numbers, which will, you know, like longer about, uh, month six, we'll start doing projections. It, it feels a little odd that we're four months in and we're going to be start talking about FY24 here in a couple of months, you know? So it's, it's that time of year where calendar year 22, we're in fiscal year 23. And we're going to be starting about, talking about fiscal year 24 in a couple of months. So it's, you know, keep your years straight. You know, as last month, you know, revenues are still trending well. Um, you know, that's, that's the two edged sword I've mentioned before about inflation. Uh, currently anyway, uh, inflated prices, uh, same amount of purchasing by our consumers within the city of Bloomington. We're fortunate in that regard, uh, so, um, tax revenues are doing well for us, you know? And I, and again, I will always comment, you know, we understand it. You know, that is, you know, the flip side of that is a burden to the consumer. Um, the, the concerns, of course, are the, um, supply chain issues and inflation. Um, but I wanted to talk about, you know, how, how we're doing, dealing with that from a staff standpoint. We can't control expenses, but we can kind of manage them, right? You know, with timing, um, and that, that sort of thing. So item 70 on the consent agenda tonight was a, a fire defibrillator purchase. It was budgeted 60 grand, um, it came in at 72. You know, so that's, uh, 20% or so over, over budget. Um, so, uh, fire department in, in hand with, uh, you know, our budget manager, Chris Tomerlin. Um, they're delaying two other pieces of equipment that they didn't need to purchase. You know, they, they, they decided that they could put those purchases off, uh, to next year. Those, those amounted to $45,000, we're going to delay. Um, so, you know, it's a little kicking the can. So, you know, it's a little kicking the can, but it's it's a it's a control that we have available to us. You know, with with the expertise we have at our staff level, our director level, you know, they're the ones that can make the decisions on, you know, what can we get by with? How can we manage these these costs situations that we're 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 being confronted with? So having said that, next slide, please. Major tax revenues, as I mentioned, continue to do well. All categories other than local motor fuel tax are exceeding budget year to date. I have those two categories highlighted because last month I I did mention that, you know, ten percent of home rule sales tax. Is designated for the asphalt and concrete fund, so posted directly to their to that fund. As they come in, so you know, ten percent of a three hundred forty thousand dollar overage, you know, that's an extra thirty four grand and, you know, this this is early in the year, but. You know, we're kind of offsetting the decrease in the local motor fuel local motor fuel tax. As far as this year's budget go now goes. Now, keeping in mind that we did lower that lower local motor fuel tax from the the pre pandemic high of four point seven million dollar budget, you can see we have a four point one million dollar. A budget for it, so, you know, we've had an impact related to covid. You know, the remote workforce, et cetera, et cetera, that's impacting local motor fuel tax. But we're fortunate in that our home rule is is offsetting that. And again, not to repeat myself too much, but a significant bump to that home rule was the online retail. The local sales tax that has to be collected by those online retailers now went into effect a couple of years ago. That's really had a positive had a positive impact on our financials as far as home rule sales tax go. So you can see at the bottom of variance, local or total year to date, two point two million dollars, you know, and, you know, we're just two or three months in, so we're fortunate in that regard. Next slide, please. You know, the general fund revenues, just highlighting a couple of items. Again, you know, you can see at the very top where it says through August thirty first, twenty twenty two, we have the annualized trend. I've mentioned, you know, this is just kind of putting things in context, but it's not perfect. We're we're one third of the way through the year, but we have a lot of seasonality in our activity, especially related to parks, building permits. So, you know, looking at the permit line, you can see that we're forty six percent of budget already versus a thirty through three percent, you know, one third of the year. Well, building permits, you know, the seasonality occurs a little bit more in the summertime. Charges for services were forty eight point three percent of budget versus a thirty three percent if we were just, you know, straight lining things. But that's parks program, so a lot of parks activities, you know, you're gonna you're gonna be logging that in early in the in the fiscal year. Next slide, please. So not a lot to mention here so far, you know, four months in, three, one third of the way, thirty three percent salary, still a little bit over, but we had that extra pay period in August. That's kind of accounting for that benefits under principal and interest expense, you know, we have some timing differences on some of our lease payments. But that'll that should be stabilizing during the year, but otherwise, you know, expenses are trending pretty pretty well right now. But again, that's active management by staff related to timing, you know, we're going to end up over in fuel, you know, for the year, but we had some of that contracted. I think fifty percent of of our expectation for the year was was set in an agreement. Before the year started, but we're, you know, we're going to trend over in that, but we'll make it up in other categories if we have to. We watch this every month. I mentioned before, our Budget Manager Chris Tomerlan meets with the department heads monthly. Some of the department departments that don't have as much activity from a month to month, like human resources, that's a quarterly meeting, but with. Public Works, Fire, Police, those those big departments, those are monthly meetings reviewing those variances to budget. Next slide, please. And then just reviewing the enterprise summaries screens real quickly. Again, wanted to highlight that the the commitments, POs, purchase orders, we call those encumbrances as well, under the year to date, actual favorable unfavorable. You know, from a budgetary standpoint, it it gets a little confusing because we reference that, you know, we kind of go cash accounting during the year, but we also any encumbrance, any P purchase order. We hit that to the budget immediately, so that's a commitment that comes off. So we're showing, and I I've been highlighting last few months, solid waste, the landfill purchase orders, we we hit those against a budget right away. So that's showing a seven hundred fifteen thousand dollar year to year to date loss. Last month, we showed six nine hundred sixty six thousand. So every month it's coming down because we logged all those expenses on the front end. And then each month as the revenues come in, the service fees were a solid waste, that number will come, that loss will come down each month. So it's a little confusing, but that shows the impact of our commitments from day one. And then across the bottom, you know, we have the revenue trend, these should trend pretty well with budget, waters up a little bit, looking to that. But all the other ones are straight line thirty four percent versus a thirty three percent annual trend. Golf, obviously seasonality, talk about seasonality there, you know, that weather is going to drive golf. You know, the discussion with the city manager today, you know, the golf budget is a difficult one because great year weather, great year for golf, bad year weather, tough year for golf. And then the arena topic of conversation, you know, that that'll be coming along as we progress through the year. Next slide, please. So just want to highlight to the community, you know, these are posted online along with all the budgets, the two budget books and the the budget and brief, everything's online. To to review access anytime anyone would like, so at that point, I'll pause for any questions or comments.
Questions, council? Everybody said, well, let's just start that way, Councilmember Walsh, Monty and then Bowlin.
Thank you, and thank you for the report. One thing that that jumped out at me real quick, and it's something that that, you know, always bothers me and I understand the numbers and having to to balance the budget and things like that. Can you tell us what two pieces of equipment had to be delayed by the Fire Department?
It's in the memo. I I don't know if I can tell you what they do, so one was like a stair chair, so I'm assuming that's a chair where they they can bring people downstairs. And I don't recall what the other one was at this point. Oh, there's the chief, chief chair, chief.
So both pieces of would be considered pieces of lifesaving equipment?
So, yeah, I mean, they are lifesave, I mean, I would say one of them is the stair chair, no, the stair chair just helps us move patients up and downstairs. It's it's a device, it's, you know, and what we have is sufficient, the laryngoscopes, their video laryngoscopes. And again, I think they just need to be put on a replacement cycle and they're still working fine, it just was getting time to start replacing them and so we can push those off.
Okay. Thank you. And then the the next one on the revenue screen. Did I see a total variance so far year to date of two point one million above? Okay.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Monty.
Thank you. So this year, we've seen a lot of water main breaks. And I'm just wondering, as you work with department heads to put together a budget, do we budget for a certain amount of water main breaks? And how are we doing relative to that? And every time we have a water main break, how much of a spike is that in our cost structure?
Those are, those are great questions, there there's a an assumption, I don't know what it is, you know, for annual repairs and maintenance for the water mains. I I don't know what the Public Works Department bases that on as far as history goes, historical. The the water fund has significant reserves, I mean, there's a lot of capital improvements that they're looking at, they're having a a study done, an infrastructure, a water distribution study done that council approved. A couple of months ago. But right now, that's one of the reasons, you know, it's always beneficial to have those reserves in place. I just can't speak to the specifics on how they decide, you know, from prior year, if they're going to look at a certain number. As it as the infrastructure ages, I'm sure there's going to be more, and then that's also another one of those things that's a little weather dependent, although it's summer now, I realize that, but in the winter, if there's severe freezing, we could have more water main breaks.
So it just seems like with the budgeting process, I mean, as we're seeing more and more of these defects that are starting to add to our cost structure. The sinkhole issue that's evolving, the water mains. It just seems like as we budget, it would be very helpful to delineate the budget category that really is about defect repair. Versus the everyday maintenance versus the improvements.
Yes, and I'm going to mention if I would can, we I'm discussing with the city manager today, maybe during committee of the whole or every other session where we we highlight one of the enterprise funds and show. The revenue and expenditure exhibit like we do for the general fund, so that'll show those cost categories for those particular funds, so we can start diving into those during some of the monthly reviews.
That actually, that it's almost like you were listening to our meeting this morning where the the finance director, this is his idea, he gets credit for this. You know, wanting to expand some of the conversations about the the city's budget in the area that he talked about, like he just mentioned. Was on the enterprise funds, you know, offering a little bit more detail. But do it maybe not necessarily the second council meeting, because sometimes meetings can run long, questions related to. The product that he delivers at second council meeting, but maybe a good fit for this would be it as a whole, so appreciate the question, comment.
Yeah, that that would be great, and then, you know, of course, the follow up to that is setting targets to spend less on defect repair and more on getting in front of these things, so thank you very much.
Councilmember Bowlin and then Crivell.
Oh, actually, Councilmember Ward, not Ward. Walsh, ask ask the question about the fire. And I'm, I just would like to say if fire comes and needs something that I would rather they get it, even if. You know, I don't want to cut corners on fire and police, that's all, thank you.
Well, we we always err on the side of saying yes to the fire guys, you know, but that's one of the thing I wanted to highlight when I first started was that we rely on the expertise of the of the department heads. When it comes to these kinds of decisions, I was trying to impress that, you know, we are reviewing, we're looking at options related to these expanding costs and delays. You know, and the flip side of delaying expenditures is, and I forgot, I wanted to mention this, is that we're we're looking at the opposite and using fire as an example there of advancing expenditures because of the same. Environment where we advanced ambulance purchase, because we're looking at a five hundred day lead time now instead of what was three hundred day prior, you know, and and so trying to lock in. First of all, have the ambulance delivered when we need it and then locking in the cost now, so it's kind of like two opposite ends delaying some, advancing some. But, you know, the point being that we're looking at it, relying on their expertise to determine if we can or cannot delay on certain items.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, but again, if the cost goes up. I don't, I like the police.
Councilmember Crivell.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just curious, you know, I know the budget, you know, process for twenty twenty four is underway. And just curious kind of what's what's been done so far, the process in general and and what what's going to happen the next few months is we start to, you know, focus really on it in January, right?
Yes, sir. Tim, did you want to comment on that or?
I do. Actually, the the budget process for budget process for FY twenty four internally. When I say it starts a day after, you know, FY twenty three started, it's true for staff. But definitely I've heard this council, I mean, it was something that was part of my performance evaluation. Wanting to be involved in the higher level conversations earlier than the schedule that we followed in the past. So tax levy is definitely something that will track separate two and under the, you know, we have statutory requirements to meet there, so that's a that's a November conversation with approval. But we see bringing council into three on ones somewhere right after Thanksgiving, early part of December, rather than bringing the council into that larger conversation. Roughly twenty four in January, so it's going to be about four or six weeks earlier.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Scott. Next item on the agenda is city managers' discussion.
I do have a couple of comments, thank you, Mayor and Council and to the community. Definitely do not like talking about me, so I probably shouldn't be in the public sector, so I I get that. I guess I want to say thank you to the elected officials. Thank you to my staff, thank you to this community, I truly am blessed, I'm very fortunate to. Work with an excellent team that do a great job of making me look very good. Very proud of this council, and I say this when I talk in smaller groups. Talk to the council members, and I think I've said it from this seat a few times, you know, think about this, just pause and imagine this. There is not a business item that we do not pass, you know, sometimes in a chair, sometimes things are tabled for additional input. By to be provided by staff, but it comes back and we we pass those items. So some of the meetings are longer, but they're very productive and very proud of all of this, and I know that we have. Thirty five meetings scheduled for the year, and I guess I have to accept that we talk about me on one of those, so. Mateus, I think we have two slides. And October first Friday is coming up on October seventh downtown. Next slide, please. Downtown Trick or Treat looks like October twenty eighth. And then cider and sweaters, Billy's already gearing up for that one. October eighteenth, he had a couple of sweaters that he tried on today and asked me what I thought, so. But no, I just want to close and say one more time, thank you very much, Mayor and Council and to the team, thank you.
Thank you. Under, I guess it's next item is a mayor's discussion. I just wanted to briefly address the a situation that. You know, happened with Pride Fest, you know, this this past week. And and just to be clear, that the the staff addressed it in the appropriate way. The issue had nothing to do with content. And it actually rather had more to do with compliance with especially vet provision. And and I know. Just to be sure that people have a an understanding of what I'm talking about, it had to do with the. The hearts that were, I guess, sprayed on in front of the the bistro during Pride Fest. So the the, you know, the the staff followed the rules, so and the according to the rules. The the markings have to happen at a, you know, when the barricades are up. And then soon after the event is over, the markings have to be cleaned up. So and that was part of the the provision. And so the 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 rules are there to be followed. But I I I believe, so the 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 staff was able to address the issue. And I think, you know, I I've heard comments to 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 that effect from Ms. Lancaster. Also indicated that the issue has been resolved. I think everybody understands each other now. And and then so we're able to to move forward. I think it is, it's important to to remember that the 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 city has has always supported Pride Fest. The staff has always provided everything that was needed for the the event to to happen, and we will continue to to do so. If anything, you know, we want Bloomington to be known as a city that is open to diversity and celebrates diversity. I I believe the unfortunate part was that. I I believe the unfortunate part was that. You know, things were said on on social media, I think that were. Might have been misinterpreted, but I I think, you know, we all learn from it, and then we. We we kind of move on, we're a community where everyone, I think, appreciates what we all bring to the table. And and then we we do the best we can and move forward. Other thing that I wanted to to mention, just a a couple of events. That I attended with and Councilmember Bolin, also Mayor Proton, Bolin was there with me. Which were very exciting. You know, it's it's fun to go to ribbon cutting sometimes because it's issues, those are really fun events, and when you go there, you. Sometimes you have surprises that you don't expect, so I went to the to celebrate the fiftieth anniversary of the Evergreen. Racket Club. And to my surprise, who was there? Matt Vilander, who is a former Swedish. Number one tennis player, and I actually watched him play when he won at seventeen. In Roland at Roland Garros in France. So that makes me very old, but it it was really exciting just to to see him there. My brother's a huge tennis fan, so I sent him a picture, he was so jealous. He couldn't believe it, he was like, oh, my gosh, this guy is there in Bloomington, that's amazing, the guy that we've all watched on TV, so. Go to ribbon cuttings, you never know what's gonna happen. We were also at another ribbon cutting together again with Councilmember Bolin. The Place for Children with Autism. Has a on, they're located on Prospect, and when you go inside, you don't expect it, but it's it's actually huge. Very fantastic place, they provide services for children with autism from age two to six. And to really kind of get them ready for the next step, and so they could be independent going into kindergarten. They have been voted one of the top fifty healthcare providers. And they're right now, they're only located in Illinois, but Bloomington is their fifteenth location, so fantastic business. Fantastic provider. And then tomorrow, we we have another exciting event with Connect Transit that we will be attending. Let's see, to celebrate their. Federal grant for electric buses, so. I know everybody's busy during the day, but you know, if you could make it, I think it will be a fantastic event, looking forward to it. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to council for. Comments, Councilmember Ward.
Yes, I'd just like to wish all the Jewish members of our community, Shana Tova, a happy, happy. And sweet new year as they enter on the season of High Holy Days.
Thank you. Councilmember Monty.
Well, I'd just like to add on to your comments about the fiftieth anniversary of Evergreen Racket Club. I had the opportunity as well to participate with them in their events that went through the weekend. It's remarkable truly to see a private organization like that serve in so many ways and sustain growth. Over fifty years, it's certainly a testament to a lot of good work among the membership and also. With this wonderful community.
Fantastic. Okay. I could sit here and talk about events all evening, but I think we are ready for a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Bolin, second by Councilmember Becker, all those in favor, saying five by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.